Your patients and we'll call the meeting to order at six oh four. And would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please. Kristi Heikal.
Peter Levitt.
Karen Curry Tonoff.
Pam Stiles.
John MacArthur.
Laurie Verville.
And agenda review. Any changes, comments?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and we are very excited to have a student presentation on our agenda this evening.
We have a new writing program, as you're aware. And I asked Mrs. Cassely if she could arrange to have some students come in from lower grades to higher grades so you could get a sense of the progression of writing from grades. And to see how our new writing program is helping our students with their writing. So I'll turn over Shay.
Sure.
Can I have everybody who came here with your writing come on up front?
Yeah.
I'm gonna take pictures of them.
Yeah.
We have, uh, okay.
So we have two study letters, can you say your names?
Harper.
Eak.
And a fourth grader.
Hi, I'm Charlie.
And a sixth grader. And they have all very kindly, with their teachers prompting and their parents' support, agreed to come here tonight.
Why not?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll start with Harper. You can step right up. There you go. Please stop.
Dear letter, I know I knew I'd read Mercy Watson before. I think Mercy is really spoiled. She has baked her own bread, her own parents, and taught her.
I, I don't think that it is fair. I love hot potatoes, but I don't get a great deal of butter on it. And whenever she wants it, I, and whenever she wants it, she gets it. I think that Mercy is certainly spoiled. I think that Mercy should have not, should not get hot potatoes with a great deal of butter on it. And when she does not have toast, she gets sugar cookies from Baby Lincoln's house.
So was that about, was that about a book you read? Nice.
Good.
So that was, um, that was their, um, writing about reading assignment. So the second grade, they picked out some of their favorite books and they wrote letters recommending the books to others, people to read. And really telling about their favorite parts and drawing from the books into their writing to do that.
Good job.
Nice job.
It was a soupy, it was a misty soupy afternoon when the mist was falling on my hands like a soft butterfly. I knew today was going to be a great day for fishing. I casted my fishing pole. A couple minutes later, I got a bite. I was really excited. I pulled up a horned poutfish. I was even more excited. Time to wrap it up for today, I said. When I hooked the hook on the circle and the hook flanged up and hooked me in the thumb. I was crying, but eventually she got it out, my tears dried away. At, I was very happy.
Nice job. Glad it had a happy ending.
And so that was narrative writing. That was one of the first units the second grades did. And you can see in there, they really worked hard in adding dialogue and some figure of language.
Yep.
And, and can I just add, your vocabulary in there was exceptional. Eventually, second grade eventually. And your use of imagery to say, you know, the, the mist was on your hands like a soft butterfly.
And I really liked the soupy day.
Yeah. It was excellent. Very nicely done. Think about being an author. Now, you're not crazy about it, but.
What we're gonna hear from fourth grades, another type of writing that goes along with the writing program. These are quick writes or free writes in their journals. Um, this is preparation for a longer piece.
I would think that Thanksgiving is the best holiday, but that's my opinion. I wish that everyone in this world would give thanks to the things they have. What if no one was thankful for what they have? Well, I'll tell you, homeless people give thanks for being alive. And you know what? I think that's bogus, that people that have a lot of money don't share with people that don't have homes. Because you know, the people that need money are thankful for a lot and still, there are people in this world who don't care. But not me. I'm thankful for my puppies, my dad, my moms, my cats, three roofs over my head, and a lot more. I love Thanksgiving and nothing could change that because to me, Thanksgiving is something that I feel every day and cherish my whole life. Now that I'm saying this, I, I really wish that everyone that lived would be happy and not hog money or food. And I'm thankful that I'm able to go to school. And if I did not go to school, I wouldn't be writing this. So thank you. So thank you, everyone in this world that help, that helps the world.
That was great.
Good.
Can you tell us, what was your name again?
Charlie.
Charlie for president.
Well, you're such a confident speaker. You just stood with such poise and so clearly speaking. That was excellent.
It was excellent.
Excellent.
So, um, sixth grade, what you hear from sixth grade is an example of on-demand writing. In each of the units, they do an on-demand piece at the beginning and an on-demand piece at the end. So we can look at growth over the course of that unit. And the on-demand, they're given very little direction. They're just, uh, and they sit and they write for forty-five minutes. So this is an on-demand piece.
It was the last round and the beta group was out. The nerve group and the alpha group were still trying to penetrate the front lines. While my friend Luke and I were trying to get closer to the red base, another one of my friends slid into the barricade we were hiding on and exclaimed, "Alpha group got in." "That's great," Luke replied. While they were trying to figure out a way in, I peeked above the barricade and I saw red and blue smoke everywhere. And then a thought popped into my head. "Maybe I can sneak into the front lines without being seen as much," I said in my head. "Guys, I have an idea," I announced to my friends. I explained to them my thoughts and Mark and Luke agreed. I sprinted, we sprinted past many players on our team and we made it to the front line. Our group nerve were trying to, were providing cover for group alpha. I told Mark and Luke to provide cover for, cover while I was running to the entrance of the base. And that it was, that, and that is when I heard Luke yell, "Mark is out." This was really bad news because Mark was really good at aiming. Right when I had the thought on running back, there was an opening and a silence, uh, a brief silence. I was saying to myself, "Should I do it?" My heart was pounding and I could hear it between my ears. If I do this, I could win this for my team. The next thing I knew, a paintball flies right past me. I jumped behind a barricade to take cover. I decided to grab a grenade and I threw it above me. I spotted players get out of the building, which meant that they had to respond. I went up to the next floor and there were some other players up there too. They opened, started to open fire on me and I got paint on my mask, which made it more difficult for me to see. I started to shoot back at the players and two or three players got out. Where we started to take over me, but they were gonna get me out as I only had one more grenade and I didn't wanna use it yet. I decided to just start shooting without even aiming. It was like a sprinkler shooting water on the grass in the summer. I was hoping while I was firing that I wouldn't get shot at. My paintball gun, my paintball gun clocked, which meant it was out of ammo. Nervously, I was hiding behind a wall, waiting to see if I got everyone out. I did. Finally, I was at the last four. The grenade I was waiting to use was still sitting there on my belt. I took it and I threw it. And I knew for a fact that I got everyone out because of how far the distance the grenade exploded. The red team players walked out, walked out and said while walking, "Good game." They knew the game was over. I took the flag and raised it high. The rest blew their whistles and the game ended. Complete happiness came over me. I was dancing and jumping up and down. I went down and I got patted on the head and back by my teammates. It was like scoring the winning touchdown in overtime. Even though winning was exciting and made me feel good about myself, the real joy came in knowing that we were together as a team and I made my friends happy and proud.
That was exciting. And you can see a lot of the same moves that some of the younger students were doing, but the more sophisticated level. In particular, the use of inner dialogue and, and mixing that with the outer dialogue, uh, that we start to see in the older writers.
Making it, I mean, the language that was used, it, it, you created a beautiful picture. It was like being there. It was excellent. I love the sprinkler with the ammo.
That was great.
Back lots of image for me from quite a few years back.
And the reality that it gets hard to see when you get paint on that mask. That true blur vision.
The one thing you didn't mention is the pain.
Or the bruises that come after.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for coming. You're the, you're the most exciting part of our meeting.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
You too.
You're having a nice, thank you.
You gotta be Facebook famous a little bit.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
Alright, now to the usual stuff. So approval of the minutes from the last meeting, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
I make a motion that we approve the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have one thing, um, page two, line thirty-seven. Where we're talking about, um, the reduction in revenue. I'd like to include the differences in the kindergarten aid and the Medicaid revenue there, just to make it clear. Um, and there's a typo in state, just a letter missing. Um, and actually then on page three, line three, I thought we should just add Heidi's last name, Dooford. Is it? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass to Ms. And it is now public input and we have no public, so I'm closing public input. Um, moving on to the financials.
Um, I provided you a handout with some supporting documents based upon inquiries that we had at last month's meeting. For a journal entry done by the auditors in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And, um, essentially, what that journal entry, uh, means is that included supporting documentation where the, uh, encumbrance balance at six thirty, two thousand eighteen was, that the auditors did, was also three hundred thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and six cents. And you'll notice it's on the second sheet. Those are obligations that the board did approve. And the third sheet just shows where the ending balance was. The three hundred thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars on your financial statements at six thirty of eighteen. Then what the auditors do is take a look at, well, what is the balance that it should be at six thirty of nineteen? And there was only one purchase order that we rolled over, um, which was the Fiber Next contract in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred. So it's the difference of those two numbers gets you to the two sixty-five, three sixty-eight. So, and that was the Fiber Next contract that was actually from the year, year two thousand nineteen, right? Correct. So it's the difference of the two. And basically, this is the same process that will happen on six thirty, two thousand twenty.
Okay. Thank you for the detail. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
In terms of the financial reports, um... Laurie, would you just, um, touch on the format? The board had asked for, uh, a little different format. Oh, yes, yes, sure. Could you review that? So, um, the board at last month's meeting asked for, um, to be able to see prior month's current expenditures plus what we've spent from July first, year to date. So the way to read this report in the upper right-hand corner, it says from eleven-one, two thousand nineteen to eleven-thirty, two thousand nineteen. We know that that's November. And in the column, the, the fourth column over, where it says current, um, in the general fund. So in the month, the month of November, we expended one million, four hundred, eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And the next column over to the right is the year to date and it does include November's numbers.
Thank you for including that. Makes it easier to do a comparison of what just happened. Um, I had one question at the top of page four. Where the first line substitutes special education, we had a negative in year to date.
We have them paying us?
So I just was wondering, and that's obviously influencing the balance also.
Uh, I believe what happened in that case, and I will do a double check on this, but, um, if a substitute that I found should not have been charged to special education, it should have been done in instructional, then that would be a reversal. However, that year-to-date number, that's, um...
Yeah, it's throwing off the full balance now.
That's quite peculiar. So I'll certainly do a drill down and, and, um...
Okay. And I have one more question, which is kind of general on postage for superintendent and principal. It just seemed like we were already starting to max out those lines. Is that, um, because like we filled a meter or it just seemed like postage was already well on its way? Starting through the page, page nine and ten. So line fifty-five, three forty.
Um, so for the SAU office on page nine, that would also include our permit that we recently, um, our bulk mail permit. The SAU supports that expense. Two hundred and fifty-two. And that also includes our, um, meter rental and any, uh, postage that we run through the system.
I was just concerned that we're already over budget.
Um, so our year-to-date that we would have, okay. The two hundred ninety-five oh two is the remaining, um, two quarters of the, uh, meter lease. So the amount, uh, year-to-date, nine seventy-fourty-one, also included some postage supplies, ink and stickers, um, as well. But I would say about nine hundred of that was put on the meter itself.
And that will last the year?
Um, I think that the other portion of the school board, let me see, when you do your mailing, when you do... Okay, so for example, when, in the winter, when you do your actual, uh, mailing of your newsletter, the school board has a thousand sixty-five dollars. That would be in the middle of page eight. So those funds, that thousand sixty-five would go towards your, uh, winter mailing, newsletter mailing.
Okay. I, I guess my question is though, the line in the superintendents, are, I mean, are we gonna be needing more or is that, are we?
No.
Okay. And then in the principal's office, um, which is on page ten, uh, third line down. You know, we're already, is that because the meters filled and we've already paid for what we'll use for the year?
Yep. Or we did put three thousand dollars on it. And that would definitely cover through the year.
Okay.
And the encumbrance is also the, um, quarterly, um, meter payment.
And are we typically using up that full meter amount? Is that a minimum we can put on or?
No, that's not a minimum we can put on, right? No, um, I think for using three to five thousand a year for your postage, um, that also includes, right, the meter cost and the use of mailing, um, is it mailing report cards? Or I don't wanna speak to what actually goes on versus, versus emails, but, um, yeah.
Report cards, test results.
Like grade five through eight report cards are mailed home and...
Okay.
So based upon history, I'm thinking that that three thousand that's gonna be, that's been expended, that's on the meter, that's gonna clearly take them through the summer.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make, make sure we weren't overloading the meter, that we're actually need to use that much all the way through.
No, we're, I know for us, at least budget of postage, we should be, we should be good.
Okay.
No question asked.
Any other questions on the financials? We're good?
Mm-hmm.
We're good.
Okay. Uh, moving on to enrollments.
We are, uh, holding, holding firm and, uh, at the high school, we and Shopin' Barnstead, we can choose that, so we're still one way.
And I'll just note that we are eight more than this time last year.
Yes.
Okay, reports. So for school board correspondence, we have a bunch of, we just have a magazine as well, I think we have, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Um, budget committee minutes. Any highlights, Kristi?
Um, no, moving, moving along, I will say our last meeting, I don't, yeah, you have the meeting minutes from the last, uh, no. The latest meeting, the budget committee actually went back through and made a decision, um, to put money back into contract line items. Select board had taken money out of any account that had three thousand dollars or more and just taken five hundred out of any account, any line item that had three thousand or more. And the budget committee did not feel that that was really a prudent maneuver in the highway department because some of them are lease line items. So next year, every single contracted item would be overdrawn because they're all contracted. So we did go back through and any contracted line item, um, we did put the five, we put it back to where it was, um, in that area. Just because we feel like it'll make next year's budgeting look off. Um, so they were very aware of that. I'll backtrack. They were very impressed with, um, the presentation of the, um, school board's, um, budget. So they're still going through it, of course, but they did like the layout. They were pleased with how it looked and, um, they're, I'm sure they'll give us more feedback at the next meeting. But otherwise, we've been plugging away. We do have to, um, extend some meetings into January. Um, so there will be more meetings because of all the warrant articles. The select board has not finalized any of their warrant articles, so we are, um, we haven't even touched any warrant articles at all, so...
So we don't know a date? We need to go back or?
I was just going to, um, add, and we learned today, um, we're going back on Thursday, the nineteenth of December. Yep. And we should be able to finalize everything then warrants. I'm hoping, I called the high school today. I know that there's a finance meeting on the tenth, so hopefully, uh, that'll get finalized and we'll be able to add in the high school member at that point. I mean, that's where we are. We're kind of plugging away at everything and we have a new member, John Markland, um, has replaced Roger Nelson. So that, that has happened, just so you're in that loop. So that's happened. And we're moving along. We filled the position relatively quickly. He's been knowledgeable and actually has been in attendance at every meeting, so it was not difficult to bring him up to speed because he's been in the audience.
Plus he was on the committee last year.
He was on the committee. Yeah, he's been on the committee. He's been present. Um, so thankfully, he's very familiar with things and is up to speed fairly quickly and they've all sworn in and... After that, I think that's it. I don't know if you pulled out anything else from our meetings, but...
I thought it was a, a good, positive presentation. The questions that they had were very reasonable. There weren't a lot of questions, but I thought it was very positive and, um, very, very open. It was very welcoming.
Good, good, good feedback.
Anything you wanna mention from technology?
I know that, can I mention that?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry. Um, I know that, um, Naime has been working on about getting the signal booster. Um, I know he had another conversation today and he thinks it'll, um, it should definitely be happening very soon at this point, so he's made progress there.
Alright, safety and wellness.
We are, uh, moving ahead with our wellness fair and, uh, we've got about, I don't know, fourteen or fifteen vendors right now. That will, uh, be there in March. We're very excited about that. And, uh, our new student packets are just about finished to hand out to those new students who enroll. And we do have our core medical team is up and running at the guidance of, um, April Elliott. So getting a lot of things done.
Great. Um, extra earn report. Any questions? I was just curious on the social emotional PLC, um, where there's an hourly, what's the typical hour commitment to that?
Uh, it's one hour a month.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
No.
Moving on to superintendent's report.
Alright, uh, tomorrow, the, um, boys and girls clubs, HR folks will be here. We have five staff members who will be working the program. We're gonna make this a reality. Our goal is that by mid-January, we will have thirty, all ten children for after-school care.
That's great.
Um, so we're very pleased with that. Um, the first part was really getting, uh, staffing up. That's done. Um so we're very pleased with that, um the first part was really getting staffing up, that's done. We have a signed MOU with the Boys and Girls Club, so um they're committed to us and vice versa. Uh once folks are hired through their process, which will be this week, and then we have another meeting on the eighteenth. Uh we'll get forms out to parents, the thought is we'll get it on Facebook, on our website, John will do a blast, get the forms out. And um then get those back so that we can have them just after the start of the year, they need a week to process them and then the goal would be to start on the thirteenth of January. So gonna make this a a done deal. We had twenty-five, fifty percent of our eighth grade class uh respond to the Expanding Horizons Program. Where they can take high school classes last period and uh those, those names are now in the hands of the high school, they're gonna be contacting the kids to set up schedules. And um going to make that a reality as well, I'm hoping that next year, the kids can take classes first and last period. And um and make them a bit more on the core content side, so we're gonna move forward with that as well. So that is a real positive, uh just wanna say congratulations to Sam Cowan, he had an excellent food inspection. Uh last month, uh just a a great job as well, uh we've already talked about the budget committee. Uh we did have Sean and Laurie and I spoke with our architect regarding the window bid, we've put a few more details in there, including the asbestos abatement. And that will be going out the beginning of January, so we'll have that for you at our February meeting, uh hopefully to award a bid. Uh and then just some other things that uh I've taken part in or attended here at the school and then just, I I know it's a little late, but a thank you to the RISE staff. Their annual Thanksgiving lunch was fabulous again and it's always very nice to walk into the room and this year, one of our young men, as you went into the room, said. Don't you look lovely today, please come in and have lunch, I was like, oh, of course I am. So very nice, they do such a great job and uh it's it's always lovely, so.
That's great.
That is my report. Yep.
Very cool, thank you.
I just wanna mention that the first two items, the the after-school care and the Expanding Horizons Program. The way those were taken on and implemented is just an impressive. Speed and efficiency getting those done, and I think they're going to add a lot for the students and families.
I think, and the students and the families and just that ability to help a lot of families in the community.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree, on and on both ends of those.
So thank you for all your efforts on making those happen.
Absolutely, my pleasure, it was uh, it's very exciting for our kids and. You know, sometimes you don't know how the students are going to view things and when John and I were presenting it to the eighth graders. They kinda sat and they listened and I was getting a sense that they weren't really excited about this. And then John mentioned, well, you get, you get credit for this, you know, well, it was just like a bubble over. Fifty percent of the kids said, we wanna do this, I think that says a lot about our high school too, to say that we wanna be a part of that culture.
Yeah, that's great. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh uh just wonderful, yeah, just wonderful.
Well, I think it also just enhances what we're trying to do in in making the curriculum cohesive and the transition cohesive, I mean, it just really builds on all that.
Yep, I agree.
Principal's report.
So, uh my report is as noted, um a couple just things that I wanted to mention, um first and foremost is the Vannen Chorus Concert is um. This Wednesday, six-thirty at the um Prospect Mountain High School Auditorium. Uh definitely looking forward to it, uh there's, we had a fantastic uh performance last Thursday by the um, by the Little Guys Chorus, it was. I- i- if you missed it, it was um there's adorable as as always and their singing, um so a huge uh thanks to um. Mister Robertson and Mister Nebu for, uh once again, um knocking our socks off with a great uh performance, uh the kids were wonderful, the audience was great. We had our first showcase um last week, it went very well, we had representation from all grade levels showcasing all sorts of different things, including uh African drumming and dancing. Um which went very well, um students, uh geez, there were so many things, uh reflections from Knights Pond, they read, they they, it was. It was truly, i- it was an awesome way to kick off our showcases for the year, uh so that was great and. Last but certainly not least, if you didn't notice it when you were walking in tonight, um definitely take a peek above the main entrance. The big, what looks like a big blank circle that was, is it supposed to be a clock, is there supposed to be something there? Is now filled with our beautiful logo, compliments of our anonymous donor, um we now have, every time someone walks in this building.
It looks great.
They're seeing a logo that they could be proud of and.
It's sharp.
It looks, it looks beautiful.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're working on getting a little LED too, that'll illuminate it a little bit more at night, so.
Nice.
Just so it shows up at, you know, when it's dark out, you may not see it, so.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea, it looks great. Buildings and ground.
Yeah. I can say very much appreciated, they finished the stage lights, uh you can now see students' faces on our stage.
Nice.
It's fantastic.
Yeah.
And they're not like this weird blue color or just complete darkness anymore, we have real lights and it's wonderful.
Right. That's great.
Yeah, Sean did a great job with his crew hanging up that sign and getting it done very quickly for, very quickly. Um I know the boiler repairs, there's been some, uh there was a little inconsistency with uh the first and the second quote that he had received. I know he's uh, he either has or is working on the third one, just to find some balance in the mix of what we really need versus. Making sure we're not doing anything that we don't need, so he's being very thorough with that.
Great, thank you. And our strategic plan update is getting to be big, wide, large letters, because it used to be. A whole long list with very narrow rows and now we're down to the last things, which is amazing.
It's a long list.
Almost like they're making it bigger, so it takes up some space.
It is, it is.
Yeah, we're gonna start our world language discussion after the new year, it's been a busy fall and such with with all the plans, so um we'll get that started in the, in January.
Great.
Although I will say, I hear lots of good things about our existing language program.
Yes, yeah.
You know, it's, sounds like it's going well.
Yes, it is.
It's just in there today, as a matter of fact, it's fantastic.
Okay, action items, New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly Resolutions. Thank you for providing us with the cheat sheet, Pam.
Absolutely, I ca- I made copies, I know I can email them, I I probably should have sent it the other way, but um.
Here, do you wanna uh run this one?
Don't wanna run this one, sure. Um. Well, first, i- i- if anyone's never been to one of these, it is kinda interesting. It's kind of a work session at the beginning, we have lunch, and while you're eating lunch, we kinda go through the resolutions. It's nice to have a little synopsis, hopefully you had a chance to read them, but we need to decide how we're gonna vote on them. And again, it's usually. Pretty s- quick, but I would imagine that the gun control one is gonna do some, there's going to be some back and forth on that one. There was last time, these are, these have gone on for the last two years that I've gone, there's been a gun control one and it's always been a lot of discussion on that one, so. That being said, um. Do we go down bu- each one, one by one and?
Okay.
Vote? Okay, so resolution number six is the first of the new resolutions, the first five are continuing resolutions. That is from the Raymond School Board, it's proposing to increase the state's building aid contribution from fifty million to a hundred million and um. The New Hampshire School Board Association recommended it to uh recommend supporting that, although it's, I believe there were some changes or some. Language changes in that resolution that they, that they're proposing.
Right. Yes, they didn't put in a dollar amount, they just put in that it should adequately cover building projects.
Right. Exactly. So.
Do we need to move everyone?
You can, you don't, you don't need to vote on it unless you wanna do that, if you can just kinda get a sense from everyone, that's fine.
Right.
Just so you know you're representing the board.
Right, so we can. If you read them and you think that what the, what the School Board Association says makes sense, which I read all of them and I thought the School Board Association was pretty much right on. On, on, um we can just say, let's just go with what the School Board Association recommended, because. Um I did go through them all and I did read them and I, I think the School Board Association makes a lot of sense and.
Yeah, I felt the same way when I went through, I mean, I went by this and then skimmed through, but this was a good synopsis and.
Yeah.
I thought the number eleven was very interesting on how, on what Keane was proposing, that the. Kind of the thrust of their proposal wasn't more or less about guns, whether we should all have guns on uh school grounds or not. But they want local control of guns, so that every school board could say what they wanted to do.
Right.
But that was an interesting slant on it and explains why the um School Board Association did not support it, that would be chaotic.
Right. And that's been um the big argument for the last couple of years, and there's always that local control and then the state.
Yeah. Yep.
So, um yeah, I think it just, it would be chaos.
It would.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree, the the number ten makes a lot more sense for.
To enforce it. Yeah. Yeah, so.
It follows, you know, like our courthouses, you can't carry weapons into any of those, so we wouldn't be the first entities that have made that state, do you know what I mean, like there are other.
Well, it already says forty seven, forty seven states have laws limiting firearms on school grounds.
The only sticking point, right. Right.
Correct.
And the only. The only thing about that, that kind of makes me kinda go eh, is where do the school grounds start? Because, you know, you have a private home that's on school grounds, so.
Yeah, it's not a boundary.
Um and that too is like, I remember, it's, I don't see it as much now, but when I was a kid. Mo- a lot of the kids had their hunting rifles on a, on a thing in the back of the truck, on a gun rack in the backs, and they went hunting after school or before school.
Right. In the year. Right.
So.
Right, so I think it's important that it says restricting means that it limits possession only to certified police officers.
Correct.
So that's what restriction means, cause otherwise it looked kinda open.
Yeah.
So, but um I think, I think they're right on. So if it pleases the board, I will go along with the School Board Association.
It's pleasing.
Alright.
Me.
Alright.
Great. Okay, the district audit, which was in our pile.
Yes, and you've got the hardbound copy, uh I put it in your seats, it literally came in this afternoon, so. Oh, okay, the hardbound copy?
Well, yeah, okay.
Okay, oh, okay, I, I, okay.
Is there anything of note?
All right, so we'll be electronic, right. Electronic was last week, but still.
It's came in today.
Okay, so um there is also, is there also this handout dated December, I just.
Yes, we have that.
So um significant, um. There's no transactions um entered into by the Alton School District during the year, for which is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. I just wanna mention that on page two at the bottom, there were um some audit findings. Um primarily at le- the last meeting, I spoke about the unassigned fund balance, and the previous meeting's Department of Revenue, so that is a a first flag. Um a lot of these that have been written have really already been addressed and we were addressing those and in the process of doing that in July or August. Um food service reconciliations, food service accounts are reconciled, but now we're collecting more reports from the director. Um so that we're looking in terms of the negative balances um and the positive balances and I know that. John and hit, John has also been involved in assisting to collect those negative balances as well. The um people who handle the cash registers, there's a second person that does that reconciliation, so we put that in place. The top of page three, the investment policy, um we have that on a tickler, actually you did um approve that in September. I brought that to the auditor's um attention um by way of a corrective action plan, um so they are aware of that, but it's still, unfortunately, it's made it here. Um still, there's some stale dated checks um that we do need to um establish um a a procedure. With the um State of New Hampshire Lost Property Division, in which we're properly turning those funds over to the state. Adjusting journal entries, um if there are any adjusting journal entries, I try to keep those at a minimum. And that there should be a second individual, primarily the superintendent, who's looking over those journal entries. Uncollateralized funds, um the, my understanding from the treasurer, the treasurer keeps. Very accurate account, um we have discussion and she has, you know, information as far as what the um bank balance is. So this may have just been one slight piece, we did talk to the auditors and provided them um. You know, an explanation that there is also an additional buffer that that the bank offers that says, look, you know, we'll, there's, if there's a gap, we'll provide that coverage. Um they still felt a need to flag it, unfortunately. Um lastly was the Student Activity Fund, um majority of these things were previous um. Transactions, um just, uh we've really increased the um, the training, uh the oversight and the support. And uh so they just felt a need to go in and make some notes on these.
I'd like to understand the uncollateralized funds a little better, you know, exactly, kind of.
So, um the bank balance as of um the end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. There was no evidence from the Bank of New York or Bank of Mellon that showed that there was sufficient insurance. On the cash balance in the, in our cash account, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Um the auditors say that it was by a hundred and fourteen thousand six oh four.
Why don't you talk a little bit about upon us receiving that, the discussion that took place with the bank to collateralize things so that. We we were not uh in the position of being uncollateralized.
Uh well, that is a a process that a treasurer does um with the bank and um. Ha- also spoke with the bank president and that there's supposed to be some, another uh additional layer in the, of insurance. In the event that the Bank of New Ha- Bank of Mellon, New York, doesn't have the coverage, so there is coverage with profile plus the Bank of Mellon, New York.
So there's FDIC.
Right.
Which collateralizes, but this audit was saying that there's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that kind of falls outside the scope of.
That was.
Any um assurance that it's safe. And I know that there's been conversation with the bank to uh get a note of.
Increasing that, right.
Collateralization, if you will.
So I think at one point, it was one point two million, so uh the treasurer had bumped it up to like one point four million. To be able to cover that difference.
Yeah. So, and as Laurie said, we've had this uh initial list for, I don't know, eight, six, eight weeks and so. Just about all of these, we have dressed and have taken care of.
We dressed them head on, really?
We did, yeah, every single one, and it gave us a good opportunity to tighten up on some things, especially the Student Activities Fund. And and I think that they were good things to. Uh, and, and I think that they were good things to point out and we have addressed them.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure there was corrective action on that one.
Oh, yes. Yeah, right away, we talked to the bank about that one.
And the investment policy is just something we need to bring before the board again for?
In a year. You just did it.
Okay.
We brought it forward uh, two.
I couldn't remember if we did it prospect or did it here.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, we did it in September.
Okay. Alright. And the, the the G A S B, that's, that's always something that is just um, an issue as far as changes in the way they want the accounting to look and
Right, and that's really their.
catching up with that.
That's right, that's really their responsibility, um, to be able to, to do that type of reporting.
Any more questions on the audit? School day proposal.
Alright, John and I have a presentation for you that we're excited about and I'd like to share it with you. Is that? Oh, yes. As a result of uh, negotiations, there was some uh, talk about the length of the school day, instructionally and for the teachers, so we started to think, um, how could we alter the students' day without changing the quality of instruction that we're offering, given that we have such a long school day. We have a seven hour, five minute school day. So, um, we started putting down some things as a proposal for the board to think about. We started with what are our goals, what do we want to accomplish? During negotiations, we talked about um, the need for collaboration for staff to meet together. So we wanted to try to include that in whatever proposal we brought forward. We wanted to make sure that the length of our classes was adequate, um, to lengthen the day length for our youngest, for all of our students. We didn't want to lose any of the momentum that we have right now as far as our programming. We were, we wanted to offer a later start for our students because it is very early. Uh, we did, we wanted to make sure that we maintained the expanding horizons program, both in the morning and in the afternoon. And of course, we have to meet the DOE's regulations on length of school day. So we had some things we wanted to um, keep in mind for ourselves. So, how to begin? Um, the teacher's day is seven thirty until three seventeen in the current contract. If we were to go forward with this, the thought is that um, the Alton buses, instead of dropping off here first, they would drop off at the high school first. And then, um, they would come here to the elementary school sometime between seven forty-five, seven fifty-ish. It would mean that our children would have a twenty to twenty-five minute later bus pickup in the morning. So instead of being outside at six twenty in the morning, um, our buses, our earliest buses would ru- would leave at about six forty and then buses could be gaited later than that. But it would mean a twenty to twenty-five minute later start for our kids. Um, our kids are still at breakfast, we still have the breakfast program and uh, in talking with Jay at the high school, by having the buses drop off at the high school first at that time, doesn't impact their breakfast program either. That would work out just perfectly. And then teachers would have common planning time between seven thirty and eight o'clock every single day. And because as you'll see, the students' day won't really start until eight oh five. Alright, John.
I have one question, does, does that mean the high school drop off will be twenty to twenty-five minutes later than it is now also, obviously because they're sharing the buses?
No.
Okay.
The high school drop off will be about what it is now.
Okay.
The difference is that instead of stopping here first at seven twenty, it's going to go to the high school first at seven forty. And that's where we gain our time. And then the bus will leave the high school and come here and drop off. And that's where the time advantage is dropped.
Alright, so, this is um, it's seven to eighth grade schedule proposed what it would look like. Um, one of the big things, again, was keeping the class periods the same as what they are now, uh, which the schedule does. Um, and again, it's maintaining the, the elective block first period, um, as well as win last period so that we could continue the expanded horizons. And this is really what it would look like. They could start their day with elective like they do now and then their day with a win like they do now, or hopefully is if we expand the expanded horizons in the mornings, they could go and attend those classes still uh, first block and also last block for the day. Um, again, it still provides the exact same time for lunch. I believe it increases recess by five minutes, so they get a little bit more recess uh, for the older kids. Uh, the instructional time, it's uh, three hundred thirty-six minutes times one hundred seventy-eight days. Uh, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and eight minutes for the year, nine hundred ninety-six point eight hours, um, nine hundred and ninety hours are required. So we're over by six point eight hours, which is one day. When, what this really means is, as far as snow days are concerned, we don't have one thing, one loss we would have is the flexibility we have now. Um, other than that, one day, we would have to make up the days um, in order to meet adequate um, time on learning. Oh, you're already, are you already done? Right. Five and six, pretty much uh, same deal, uh, fifty minutes, uh, pretty much stays the same lunch, still twenty-five minutes. We have win and elective block where they are. Um, again, it's providing for adequate lunch and recess. Uh, the difference here is it's, the adequate time of learning is uh, the requirements are different, uh, for, for the little guys, um, and we're over by thirty-seven um, hours or six days. So with these guys, we actually do have that flexibility still. Um, it's more the grade seven or eight that we would lose, so. And the beauty of doing a schedule like this is if you were to see a comparison of our schedule now, uh, versus what this is, is um, they're all aligned, which gives us flexibility with our UAs, there's not, you know, in the middle of a class, they have to go somewhere else, cause the way we line up now, it doesn't line up with these nice neat blocks for our unified arts like it does now, um, which gives a lot of uh, freedom, but it also, it cleans up some of the issues that we have with the schedule, uh, with overlaps in the periods, so. Um, this is a definite win. Um, and it falls, it really, as Pam and I were, were sort of fleshing this out, it uh, everything falls really nicely, uh, following this format.
And for our little ones, um, they have big blocks of instructional time. We still maintain the number of recesses. We have recess at the end of the day for the K twos to eat, to shorten their day. Um, we have enough hours certainly, um, to meet the DOE requirements. But, um, we have maintained the integrity of their day with their lunch recess and their um, instructional time. So, um, what, what did all of this accomplish? Um, the kids are gonna, would keep all of their same specials, we haven't cut back on anything. There's no impact to the end of the day athletics and games because we will end still at the same time. Uh, it maintains just about all of the current initiatives except one that we're gonna talk about. Um, again, the buses would drop off later, so we have a little start later day. And every day, in this period right here, seven thirty until eight o'clock would be, you can't read it, but it says staff collaboration time. And this would mean that every single day, there's thirty minutes when all staff are available for team meetings, for spark meetings, for curriculum meetings, that they would have that every single day, every teacher has that. Uh, preschool hours would not be touched, they would remain the same. And the student day officially would be eight oh five until two fifty, which is six hours and forty-five minutes, which is a little bit above average, but not much, uh, of the state, instead of seven hours and five minutes, which is the average.
What is the state average?
State out, average is six hours and thirty minutes. So, some things that could be in our way. Um, if the collective bargaining agreement doesn't pass, um, we would have to, if you wanted to do this, we would have to do an addendum with the ATA. Because currently, the length of the student day is negotiated, it is in the current contract, that the instructional day must be from seven thirty until two fif- uh, seven forty-five until two fifty. So, we would have to get the okay from ATA to do that. John, you want to talk about this?
One of the things we do lose, um, is the SSR, uh, our sound sustained reading, which is currently in the schedule. Um, every day for grades five through eight, um, it wouldn't be there. I mean, it's, the schedule has to give somewhere to, to accommodate for the rest. This is where it doesn't. However, um, as, as a way around this, we're gonna be requiring that every grade level, um, at least ten minutes of SSR on a daily basis, so we kinda are getting it back. Um, and the other thing, uh, through our student forums, uh, it, it has come out, especially with our older students, um, the need or the want for an after-school book club, so this would be yet another reason um, to kick that in the high gear and to get a book club for these kids to continue to pro- promote the importance of reading, so. There's always another way around it. We really feel that if we do this, we have found that way.
And we've got some thoughts about how to weave in reading into the UA cycle as well.
Yes.
That's uh, something new. So just finally, some things to consider. Um, the average New Hampshire day is six thousand thirty minutes, so we'll still be over that, but not by much. Um, we do have less fle- flexibility with forgiving snow days, but it's like we did when we had a hundred and eighty days, you have to make the most. Um, and we could still start after Labor Day and um, be done when we are. So, that is it. Questions?
You ready?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Um, time for drop off in the morning, when would parents be able to drop students off in the morning? Would that be altered? Cause right now, they can do around seven twenty, well, seven, but I knew there was a staff coverage. Would there be?
Now.
Well, that's what's fixed, would that staff um, coverage be fixed this past, last year? Actually, we fixed with having the parents, um, that are in there now adjusting the schedule, so that was set. Um, as far as the drop off right now, uh, the doors, um, it starts at seven for the kids to come in and we do have coverage in there at seven. And the buses are not permitted to open their doors until seven twenty.
So it'd be the same.
So it'd be this, parents would still be able, I'm thinking of parents with work schedules who've, who've got that. Um, and I was, in my brain, I'm also thinking that maybe, um, especially some of those five through eight kiddos, I don't know if the libraries are open for them to get their reading in in the morning when they come in, instead of all being in a loud crazy gym, there may be a time for a little pre-morning work or a place where they can quietly go and read. I know the, the noise level, so just brainstorming that is, if you're losing your sustained reading time, maybe to be able to offer that in the morning when they come in, um, is one thought. And then the other one, and you would think I would know the answer to this off the top of my head, but I don't. I noticed you broke down the forgiving flexibility by grade level. Are we required, because we're a K eight, to hold to what the middle school number is? I thought we were, cause it's there's been so many new concepts and I'm gonna bite my own tongue on this, cause I hate the concept of Blizzard bags. Um, but at the same time, with the technology that we have, particularly in the five through eight, making that a possibility for X number of days and maybe something we consider to balance, we may not ask our K through four students maybe to do the same type of bag requirement? Does that, I don't know how that, I'd knew. Well, meaning that it's what's in their bag
Yeah.
to do is obviously going to be different than what's in a fifth, i- it's supposed to be equivalent, correct? But it's, what we ask a first grader to do is obviously not the same as what we ask. I, like I said, I'm not a big fan of them because I like education to be relevant and timely and so I, I don't like busy work. Um, but if we're cutting it that close, I don't know if it's something to be proactive with and say, we have two days or something that's meaningful and, and relevant, but would help us on the end that, that we may be able to do. It's a brainstorm?
Yeah, absolutely. And we can, we can look into that. Blizzard bag planning, as I'm sure you know, I have, and I bet it is where Blizzard bags were a big thing. Uh, it takes a tremendous amount of planning, uh, coordinating. Uh, it's supposed to be exactly tied to what you're learning, so you can't just put aside some, you know, mimeographed papers and then pull them out when it's a Blizzard bag day. So, it takes time and if we were to do that, and if we were to do this, I don't know that we could do Blizzard bags next year, we have to do them the following year. Um, and I say that, but you know, maybe if we buckle down in the fall, I, it's a possibility.
It's just a brainstorm, cause I, I did notice you had broken it down and I was pretty positive you had to go with the.
We have to do the nine hundred ninety. If seventh and eighth grade are in a elementary building, then the regs say they have to have nine hundred and ninety, they cannot have the nine forty-five.
Right. And I was trying, and I was trying to figure out a way, and I'm sure every school district who's got a K eight has tried to, to figure out that process, like can we do something that only the five through eight or the seventh and eighth? Or, and that may be something that the state looks at it, at some point. Um, because it seems unfair that we have so many extra hours for our littles, but they are tied to what the older olders have to do, but like I said, with the technology that we have and the one-to-one devices and the ability to connect to the internet at home, there may be ways to revisit this. I, I was opposed to the mimeographed papers that went home and was busy work on the day, but whereas we do so much project-based learning now, there can be a day of students working on on, on work that they are, would currently work on at school, so.
Maybe you do a classroom with, yeah, that would.
Yeah, with, with the one-on-one devices, I would think, you know, that could definitely be made more current. I don't know what regulations are around Blizzard bags for state regulations, is, is there any
Oh, there's a percentage that has
Restrictions?
Has to complete.
Eighty percent of students take part in Blizzard bag.
But are there any restrictions on what can be online or not online? Okay.
No.
I mean, I think it's che- Yeah, I think it's changed a little bit and with the resources we have, I, and I, I just was saying, if we're cutting it that close and making it that tight, um, and if we're still gonna try to follow parents' requests of trying to start after Labor Day, but at the same time, you know they're gonna be upset if we're going up to June thirtieth. So, I, yeah, I'm just playing, you know, if we've only got one day of wiggle room with this new schedule, it might make parents feel a little bit better if they knew we had some.
The big push would be that, you know, these Blizzard bags are obviously meaningful, relevant and completed because if we don't hit that percentage,
Right, it doesn't count.
Right.
Which means we can't evade.
But the thing with Blizzard bags as well is the, um, the exception to that, if you will, is that students don't necessarily have to finish Blizzard bag work on Blizzard bag day. The district can say, if you don't have a chance to do it or you don't have internet, we know that we have at least ten percent of our population does not have internet access in their home. So, let's say they, they can't do the work, and if we say you've got two days to finish it, at the end of the two days, we say, okay, did everybody do their Blizzard bag? Oh, you all did, excellent, we're on, we're good.
Well, also, if there's a Blizzard, there may not be power or internet in their homes, so.
And there are some, I know, and I only speak about it, cause I know Gilmanton has just done theirs and I was talking to a parent who had received um, some information and e- even the teachers are online, so it counts as days for them because they have to be uh, available for certain percentages of the day, but they also said that it's not always going to be, cause it'll be dependent upon power, so they've only got a limited number of days that they will call Blizzard bag days. Um, basically because it's, hey, the roads aren't good, but you can do most of your work at home and this is our plan to accomplish that. So it just, it ties into this, I would like us to look at it so that if we really only have one day of wiggle room recovery and we get one of those yucky nasty winters. Nice, I love your optimism, I really do. Um, I just, I'm not a big fan of them, but at the same time, having one or two days that I just, I'm not a big fan of them, but at the same time, having one or two days that we could use to have a buffer isn't unappealing to close-knit, tight winters.
We could work on that, absolutely.
At least we've explored it. If we say no, at least we know we've presented it and-
Yeah.
And, but otherwise, I think it, it answers a lot of, questions have been brought up by parents, you know, in the community over the last few years about how long the day is, especially for the younger kids, how long the bus trip is, so this will help that also. So, yeah, I think it answers a lot of those desires that we've heard.
Yeah.
So, what would you like to do?
Well, I mean, isn't it also contingent upon the teachers' contracts?
If the teacher's contract, when the teacher's contract passes, there's no issue, because that language of the instructional time has been taken out. It is not in the new contract, so it's, it's completely up to you. If it's not passed, then we would have to talk to ATA about making that, that change. I wonder if they would be willing to do that. I can certainly, if you would like, talk with the ATA president and see if that were to happen. Can he get a sense from membership if they would be willing to allow us to alter the student day, whereas it's negotiated, and if they'd be willing to do that?
Are you looking for a motion from us to-
Make a motion to accept the change in school day scheduling for next year?
We make pending the ATA, any necessary agreement with the ATA?
Well, if we, if we accept it, then-
We only need to go back if-
It's accepted, and it's gonna be up to us to, at that point, if-
Then we only need to deal with if it doesn't pass, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
Then we'll have to deal with the ATA, but-
Yep, okay.
Right.
But that'll just be an MOU or a sign card, right, yeah.
That's correct, yes.
Does he need to amend the motion to say student day and not school day? Does that matter?
I think it's helpful. It clarifies that you're doing the instructional day and not the teacher day.
So, before I, I was gonna second it, but I, before I second and then we amend, I-
Just don't say it over, just, you don't need to amend, just say it over again.
Yeah.
So, make a motion to accept the change in the instructional day as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, I will try to-
You sound surprised.
I needed all my feedback before the discussion part.
I was telling John, I think, I know what the board's gonna do tonight with this, and you didn't, so I'm surprised, but-
Think we're gonna sit on it for a while?
I thought that you were gonna say you have to do a poll and contact the parents and find out if they wanna do that.
I think if the, I think if the drop-off time, I think if the drop-off time for parents driving in is the same, cause that was my one concern when you first brought it up. How is it going to affect the schedule for parents who have to drop off earlier or vice versa at the end of the day? But it seems like we're covered.
I, I think we have pretty good feedback on what parents need and what parents want. I feel pretty comfortable that this is a survey we don't need to send out.
I like the morning SSR to that, that, that's already sparking something, so.
Well, I also-
But it's such a long day right now.
Oh, it's a long day, yeah.
It's long.
Especially for, really, especially for the little guys. It's, it's, it shows.
Well, they're long bus rides too, so it helps with that.
And I think if you can look at not having all the kids in just the gym or the calf, I know that noise level and that stimulation if, so, and some of them may need to do some work in the morning or, or read in the morning, so if you can investigate that part.
Absolutely, and we'll come in the spring with the details. But, and again, if the warrant passes for the cafeteria expansion, we're gonna have a nice, large cafeteria that in the morning, kids could sit in there and, and do homework if they like. While kids who might wanna just sit and chat can sit in the cafeteria, and if other kids wanna read, they could come in here. So, all kinds of possibilities. And we can also start this spring working on Blizzard bag work. I'm su- I bet we can get that done before the start, we can get that done.
I just think by doing what you just did, it's gonna give us the time to actually get our heads together and really dig in earlier than we had anticipated we could, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I think when we're unsure of what our, our popular, our parent population feels, I think we'll send you to do surveys, but I think this is one that I feel very confident about.
I agree, I agree.
There are thoughts and feelings on this.
Excellent, and it allows us to go forward with-
And also, the whole thing was well thought through, and it also helps give you better scheduling process, and I think that adds all the way around.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, again.
My god, we surprised her.
Takes a lot to surprise parents, really, really does.
Okay, so, moving on to the operating budget, which we've been through already, so it's just a matter of the final numbers with the health insurance.
Yes, you have to make a motion to accept, and I, I don't know how you wanna do this tonight, because I was hoping that we'd have Prospect Mountain's number, but we do not still officially. So, um-
I, I can just add quickly about the JMA budget meeting. So, we met last Friday night. We didn't have full attendance from the Alton Budget Committee, unfortunately. So, I don't know if we got really all the questions on the table. But we actually, we had to go through, we went through every page, every line item, which is kind of unusual for the, for that budget committee. There were a lot of questions, I think they were all well-covered. There are some, a few things, I think there are five questions that we need to come back with information. And we have a meeting tomorrow night. And that will hopefully bring both sides in attendance, so that we can get a final run-through of any questions that Alton had. But I think then they'll be at a point to vote. So, I expect we'll be done tomorrow unless anything new comes up that needs backup information provided that can't be done tomorrow night. But otherwise, I'm hoping we'll have a vote.
Okay, and we have to go to the towns' meeting next week, and they're going to have to vote on a final number as well.
See, and we're meeting, we're planning, if we don't get it done tomorrow night, we're planning to meet Wednesday night also.
Okay. So, we should have a number for the budget committee.
Can, oh, go ahead.
So, do you want to vote on the bottom line? Right now, it's fifteen million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. If the Prospect and Mountain vote budget comes in as the original budget, it's going to decrease our budget by ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. I don't know how you feel about this, but what if you voted on the budget as it is right now, the fifteen million, one forty-one, two eighty-five? That you'll see that number on the very last page of the budget. And, um-
So, so you have plugged in Prospect's last year's budget, or the proposed? The current proposed, or the current years?
Is it, no, current year.
Okay.
And the, their proposed is ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars in the last for Alton, for twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay, so, we've plugged in the nineteen twenty number in this proposed budget, but it may be ninety-three thousand dollars less than that. So, do you want to vote on the, the proposed budget as it is right now? And then do a acceptance of whatever the Prospect Mountain number is? You will agree to that, and then I can do a board poll just to verify that you're comfortable with that number, and we'll do it blind again, so you can't see each other's. I don't know another way to do this and get your approval before the town, because you need to approve it first.
I think that makes sense, I mean, because we don't really have, I mean, whatever the, whatever the JMA Budget Committee says is what it is. It's not like that budget goes to deliver session like ours, so we kind of in our position where we accept what it ends up being.
I was gonna say that I think if we-
We're also aware of what it is and what the proposed amount is, so.
Right, and it is a line item.
I mean, if, if anything, it would be less-
Correct.
Yeah, than what was proposed.
That's correct.
The budget committee's not going to add, I'm fairly certain.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think my recommendation was gonna be to approve what we have in front of us tonight, and then if the numbers come back, or whatever the numbers come back from the high school, we can do that through a poll and then confirm that at our next meeting. That's what we do very typically in the JMA for bids or for things that come out that need our approval that we can't do in time. We do it by an email poll, and then we just confirm that vote at our next meeting. That yes, that was how we had responded via email, does that kinda make sense?
Well, I think you're saying the same thing.
Yes, we are, we're agreeing.
We approve our number, accepting what the JMA budget amount will be, and then confirm it with a poll, verify.
Yeah, should we?
So, that will be the number then? It won't be the fifteen, one forty-one, two eighty-five?
So, with the proposed, their proposed number, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So, it'll be this fifteen million, forty-seven, four eighty.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we approve the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one operating budget for a bottom-line number of fifteen million, forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. And that is accepting the proposed PMHS budget number, accepting that, and we will verify that by poll, in any case, but especially if there's any change from the JMA Budget Committee.
I'll second that.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Default budget, you want to enter? Default budget.
Okay, you've got the default. It is coming in at two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Lower than the proposed budget will be. I am in the process right now of doing up summary sheets for the deliberative session, as we've done in the past, that highlights what will happen if the default is accepted. Things like the new teacher that we have for the lower grade in the current budget will not be hired. There'll be cutbacks in supply, cutbacks in new books. There'll be no new classroom furniture, reduction in educational software and tech support. We'll lose our cycles for technology curriculum upgrades and the gym upgrade, and we will not get the schoolwork truck plow that we desperately need. So, I've got all those down, and that will also go to all of our families in the mailing. It's not a, it's twelve cents per thousand, so it's not an awful lot of money. And I'm hoping that our, our town will support the proposed budget instead of the default. And the default was created by what is in the current budget, with the exception of contractual obligations that we need to have.
So, when we see a line that says the difference is negative, and it's to meet current contracts, it simply means that the current contracts this year were less than the proposed budget?
That is correct. Yeah, and the law says that whenever there is a change on a line, there has to be an explanation. So, every time there's a change, increase or decrease, you will see some explanation.
And just, cause I'm trying to think this through my head, um, and this would also affect the CBA?
No.
If we get the default budget, no?
No, CBA is a Warren article.
It'll go through separate and be on top of default anyway, okay.
Correct, that is correct. And we have taken out the, um, the expenditure line, I'm losing the word.
The salary adjustment line.
Salary adjustment line, that we had a lot of talk about last time. And while I think we had a good rationale why it was in there, and it can be seen both ways. So, if the default gets voted in, there will be no salary adjustment line. So, all support staff, admins, anyone who's not collectively bargained will be at a stay-put salary that is not in the default.
So, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one default budget as presented.
I'll second.
Do you want the number in the motion?
If you wouldn't mind if we can leave it like that, because again, if Prospect comes in,
Right, yeah.
that will allow us the flexibility to alter that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Okay, warrant articles.
All right, um, you have the warrant articles there for you. Been thinking a little bit more about the up to articles, which are articles seven, eight, and nine. And-
I was curious if that lang- the up to language is in, in the actual verbiage?
Because instead of up to, it's the sum to come from fund balance and no amount to be raised by taxation. And that's, that's the legal language, if you will. The thought is, we have a number, we have a lot of expendable trusts as a school district. We have a school roof repairs trust that is years old, that has three hundred and sixty-five dollars in it. We have a safety and security that has a hundred and forty dollars in it. And we have a bathroom one that has a dollar eighty-five. So, my thought is, could we clean these up next year? Bring forward, we have to do this by Warren article, bring forward six expendable trusts that really could all be met with their needs in the general buildings and grounds expendable trust. There's, we don't need an emergency general maintenance fund, because the building and grounds expendable trust covers that. So, so the thought is here, I would like to propose that instead of putting in Article nine with the safety and security trust, for example, which right now has a hundred and forty dollars in it, and that when we need something for safety and security, like the cameras that we just purchased for five thousand dollars, that comes out as a general fund. We didn't, we're not pulling it from an expendable trust. So, instead of putting in Article nine, just not putting that one in this year, with the thought that next year, we're gonna bring forward these six expendable trusts and all put them, and put them in to the buildings and grounds. And that Article seven, instead of seventy-five thousand dollars to the buildings and grounds, put a hundred, up to a hundred, and keep special ed as it is with the up to a hundred. That keeps the same amount for those three articles at two hundred thousand, and it gives us some foreplanning on cleaning up those little tiny expendable trusts that are many years old. That's a proposal for you.
Yeah, there's a bathroom refurbishment fund.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all too sliced and diced.
Right.
Bathroom is a dollar eight, a dollar eighty-five in it. I mean, it's, it's-
Get the nice toilet paper for that.
Yes.
We'll save some, we'll save some ink on this list.
Yeah, yeah, just- So, if we leave Article two open right now until we get the final number from Prospect, I think we can cover that when we do the poll. And I'll just fill in the numbers here and let you know that, and then you can come here, yea or nay. So, that would cover Article two. So, we need to know tonight if you vote for the remaining articles and what the votes are. Because these are going to be done next week with the towns' budget committee. Next week, oh, that's right.
Okay, so you need motions only on Article three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and ten.
And ten. And we don't, we don't need one on four.
All right, and do we need to read them all separately, or can we accept as presented?
Um, for these, I think you should do them separately.
Okay.
And you don't have to read them through, but if you'll say the article number and- Or is everyone in favor of it?
Okay, I'll just go ahead and read them, do them, all motions. So, I move that we accept Article three. For the collective bargaining um with the Teachers Association as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. I move we accept special warrant Article number four.
Don't need to.
Okay, I move that we accept Article five in relation to the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the Building and Grounds Trust as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. I move we accept Article six, um, related to the Technology Expendable Trust as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I move we accept Article seven in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to the, be added to the existing Building and Grounds Expendable Trust. The balance as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. I move we accept Article eight in relation to one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the existing Special Education Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And I move we accept. Article ten. To appropriate the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, um, which is our portion of to be added to the Prospect Athletic Field Capital Reserve Fund as presented.
I'll second.
Do we need to renumber that, just as a discussion point? So, I just did because it was moved as Article ten?
Oh. I would, I would vote on number nine to withdraw it, so that will show the consistency.
Okay, thank you. I was just concerned that we would say it's Article ten and then it shows up as nine and.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll finish with Article ten, we'll go back.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I just had mine, so.
Okay, all all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I move that we strike Article nine. As it has been presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you, sorry, I guess we're already. Just where we go, and what you're vote, you're gonna have to do, you do have to vote on accepting the uh audit. As written by our auditors. Okay.
So, so moved.
I move that we accept the audit.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to policies.
Uh, just one, this is um in response to House Bill sixteen twelve about our data security. Uh, this is the first of two, and it just talks about uh mostly email security, internet security, and what. We as a district are responsible for and what our staff is. Primarily, this language came from the School Boards Association. It's um, it's pretty much boilerplate, but.
I'd kind of be interested in Pam's input on this, though.
Really?
But if it's boilerplate.
It is.
It's boilerplate.
It is boilerplate. I make a motion that we accept Policy EHAA on Computer Security. Email and Internet Connections for a first and second reading.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. Okay, personnel.
I make a motion we accept the hire of Kimberly Thomas, a Special Education Para-educator.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously.
And I make a motion that we accept Caleb Tupick. As Technology Assistant Two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. Future agenda items, did you make it that far?
Yeah, I wanted to add in January.
Obviously, we're skipping public input because we have no public.
Um, January will be preparation for the deliberative session. So, uh, you can discuss who would like to speak with to which warrant articles, and I'll I'll bring the summaries with me, so you'll have those. And in April, we'll be bringing forward Policy EHAB, which is the Data Governance and Security Policy. Um, which ties right to our Safety and Security Plan. So, the audit will be taking place in January, and that'll give us some time to get the audit and then write, excuse me, the corresponding policy.
Okay, and our next meeting date is Monday, January thirteenth. Any other business? And we do not need a non-public session?
No.
So, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for everything tonight. Um, you surprised me.
Bye.